I will call this meeting of the Seneca County Council to open for today the number seven county in 2018. Please join me in the budging, please.
(audience clapping) Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather as a community and freely express our opinions as a community. Thank you for the veterans who fought for this right. Thank you for fair and free elections that were conducted yesterday. In your name...
Can't hear you out!
In your name, with pride.
Okay, we'll try to guess if no real sound system here, folks, are on. There will be...okay. So we'll talk as loud as we can, which doesn't seem to look above for me. So, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kershner?
Here.
Commissioner Stacy?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Okay, so we gotta all know the order of things. We...the purpose of the meeting is to get comment from the public. Everyone has, in advance, has submitted their questions or submitted to have some time. I wanted to take my three minutes up front. First of all, I want to thank everybody who voted yesterday, whether you voted for me or not. Thank God we have the ability to put people in office here. Thanks to everyone, and we will make sure that we represent you. The second thing that I'm gonna talk about very quickly, and we'll let the night go, is I've got eight pieces of literature now from the pro-win side. I think the ironic part of this is that this piece in particular talks about the influence of fossil fuel packs or influence in...to the people of Seneca County. These people have sent out eight pieces. Isn't it ironic that they would suggest to you, "Don't listen to any other packs," when a pack's doing the same thing to you every day? This is amazing to me. I've had it. I don't know about you guys, but I've had it with these pieces. These are folks sitting on their throne someplace in Columbus or Florida or whoever it knows. What I would do tonight is challenge whoever this is. They're...the people that fund them are secret. We're not able to find out who it is that's funding them. I have been told by both S-Power and Apex that they have no interest, financial interest, in either of these packs. I'm taking them for their word. So the question is, who is it that's funding? Who is it that's funding this stuff? I would challenge them, if they have some argument regarding wind turbines in Seneca County that they show up. You know, the most coward way to be part of an argument is to have no face and no name and no way to know who's funding you. So whoever these people are, American Prosperity Project, the checks and balances, I challenge you to show up to one of these meetings, show your face, and debate like somebody that should, somebody that has some integrity. Show your face.
So with that, are you guys calling special meetings? Are you guys going into special meeting? I can't...okay. Okay, so maybe you roll call. You guys are...
Okay. Charlie Watkins, Seneca Regional Plan.
Hey, everyone. Would you like to send everyone to a meeting tonight, public meeting, to the Seneca County Council, the township and footprint of the Seneca Wind Project, to discuss the action of the meeting. Thank you to Centennial Township, for the use of this building, and thank you, Reed, for taking the time to clean this up for us. Tonight's meeting has an hour of public comment. Speaking of the elected 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 official, regional planners are just gonna call off your names in order that you register. At this time, we're just gonna remind you of the Ohio Open Meetings. We have a lot...everybody who wants to come to the Open Meeting, come. The elected officials are kind enough to allow the public comment. If you don't know the rules for tonight's meeting, they're very simple, very easy. We had people register. We had 25 people register, two withdrew today at tonight, and we had two that were moved with us. So we had a little lax moment we had registered. The rules are very simple. It's time to state with a stamp, we're gonna call a human order that you register, and it's everybody who can put point two register. Nobody from outside can do it. So with that, if you want to participate, questions will be answered this time. So our first person to come on is Chris Eickel.
First off, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in thanking and congratulating Commissioner Mike Kershner on his huge victory last night where Seneca County showed that no matter how much dirty money the outside big win lobby spends, we, the people of Seneca County, showed that no matter how much they spend, we make the decisions in our own accord. (applause) Since some people are sitting and some people are standing, the next thing I'd like to ask the audience to do is please raise your arms or hand or stand up if you're against these industrial wind projects in our county. Thank you. So next, I just wanna go through a few numbers. We have over 2,500 people that have signed our petition asking commissioners to rescind the AEZ. We went through over 4,000 no wind turbine sites in Seneca County. We've had two massive public meetings where attendance has reached well over 550. We have 1,600 followers on our Facebook page. We have the support of State Representative Bill Reineke, State Senator Dave Burt, one of our county commissioners, Mike Kershner, and many of our township trustees. Speaking of our townships, we would like to thank the trustees that have listened to the residents today. Seven out of 10 townships have voted to intervene against the Republican Seneca Wind Projects with Venice Township to vote on it either tonight or Monday night. Five townships out of the possible seven have passed resolutions to asking the commissioners to rescind the AEZ. Commissioner Thomas, if you truly organize this meeting in hopes for compromise, I'd like to tell you and Holly that that time is common past. Rescind the AEZ and vote to intervene against both reculling and Seneca Wind, or continue to stand isolated on the pro-wind island that is getting smaller and smaller every day. Listen.
All right, next, I'd like to call up Shannon Price.
Hi, I'm Shannon Price, and from Eden Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. When people are presented with a new situation, like the prospect of turning our community into an industrial wind project, it's human nature to draw on our own personal experiences as a point of reference to wrap our heads around the magnitude of such a problem. I work in healthcare, that's my knowledge base. I see many parallels between healthcare providers and the way they take on patient care decision-making compared to the Seneca County Commissioners and the way they have taken on the decision-making process with Seneca Wind and Republican wind projects. Let me give you some examples. In healthcare, we follow the Hippocratic Oath or have a similar ethical philosophy of De No Hides. We weigh risk versus benefit of specific treatments, and we look to scientific evidence, such as guidelines, to make decisions. As elected county commissioners, you are delegated the responsibility of looking out for the health, safety, and well-being of all residents in Seneca County. You are also charged with looking at all evidence and guidelines when making decisions on behalf of us, the residents of Seneca County. Providing healthcare that would benefit some while harming others would be unethical, and it would be alarmingly unethical for doctors to provide care that would harm one patient with the solitary motivation of financially benefiting another. If a patient were to have a negative outcome from care provided, and if scientific guidelines were deliberately ignored, it would be a case of malpractice. The Seneca Wind Project will wildly decrease property values, destroy wildlife, negatively impact human health, as well as a whole longer list of other harmful effects that are listed in the S-Power application. The WHO, or World Health Organization, recently issued sound guidelines for industrial wind turbines. The WHO is a very respected organization who issues guidelines for other healthcare issues such as diabetes and hypertension. S-Power's map shows sound exceeding the WHO recommended threshold in many areas of the Seneca Wind Project. These WHO guidelines have been blatantly ignored by S-Power and the county commissioners. From a healthcare standpoint, the risk versus benefit ratio of Seneca Wind Project is putting the residents of Seneca County at significant risk without many benefits. The only clear-cut benefits being financial. At a county level, the benefits are minimally financial at best, with only a select few of residents in the county benefits. If you, as county commissioners, were being measured by a healthcare standard, forcing these industrial wind turbine projects on us would at the very least be considered unethical, and your decision-making skills would be of use in this malpractice. Because it is legal, sounds like a weak excuse in the foreign public opinion to justify the Seneca Wind Project. The risks of health, safety, and well-being of all residents in Seneca County are just too great.
Would you like to call the people next?
I got this flyer from a mailbox yesterday, and it's from EPP. Basically, it talks about fake news versus real news. It goes on to discuss...it goes on to discuss what can be the result of having a winter in the county. And so they check off the positives. Improved schools, stronger local business, better safer schools, new hiring jobs. What they don't say is, "What do you get besides that?" Or what they don't say is, "What the turbines don't do." It doesn't mention any success. So years ago, maybe several decades back, somebody came up with the idea of building wind turbines, it's a great idea, it'll fix the environment. However, that's not what we have today. The wind turbines we have today do not fix the environment. This flyer doesn't say anything about CO2 emissions being reduced. It doesn't talk about...it doesn't say how many power plants have come offline. So that was the whole goal at the beginning. So what's happened, we kinda lost Paul and Son. We're not reducing CO2 emissions, we're generating cash. And that's not what this was intended to be at the beginning. It's not cash generation. So I would just say this. Why are we rushing? There's no point in saying, "We need to build a wind farm right now." We don't even know where we're going with all this. There's a tremendous amount of controversy. Wind turbines, turbines are great as something that they are, they're gonna be around next year, year after, year after. We can go after this anytime we want, but until all this controversy settles out, I'd say we're gonna intervene against it, but break it.
Hello, my name is Greg Smith, and I'm from Blue Township. I'm going to get right to the point for why we are here tonight, which is that we want our township trustees to intervene on behalf of all of our constituents. Commissioner Thomas has his way. He would reduce setbacks and move the turbines even closer to our homes. He has testified in Columbus to do just that. With the AEZ still in place, additional projects will continue to come into the county, and wind turbines will dominate our rural skyline. A case in point was last week's announcement that Emerson Creek filed a rapification for a project that is 50% larger than Seneca Wind. Since there is no referendum, the only method we have to oppose these projects is for the citizens and the townships to intervene in opposition with the Ohio Power Society Board. The township trustees have a responsibility to intervene on behalf of their constituents. Two weeks ago, the prosecutor's office issued a memo that states that townships can intervene at no cost, and they don't have any obligation to go any further in the process. Therefore, there is no reason why a township should not intervene. Within the last few days, Eden, Reed, and Centennial Townships passed a resolution to intervene, and we thank them for that. Four of the five townships in the Republican footprint previously chose to intervene as well. It is obvious that the majority of the people in the townships are in opposition of these projects. Five of the 15 township trustees in the Seneca Wind footprint are pro-win, and all five of them are leaseholders, either directly or indirectly, including all three of the township trustees. There is not a single pro-win trustee throughout the footprint that isn't connected to a lease. I suggest that our five pro-win trustees can't separate their personal interests from their elected responsibility to serve the constituents and not themselves. Look ahead at the hatred conflict of interest. Does the same situation exist with the county commissioner's office? Shane, I know Carolyn Baldwin-Jolod is your mother-in-law. I have a copy of Apex Wind Lees for Honey Creek Wind that was signed on August 3rd of this year by Carolyn Baldwin-Jolod, trustee of the Revocable Trust. It would seem logical that you and your wife are beneficiary of this trust. My point is, just like the five pro-win township trustees, there is a high probability that Commissioner Thomas also has a conflict of interest which raises further questions. Given this new information, this is all the more reason for the township to intervene on behalf of people with the least gain and the most good. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for having this public meeting, and thank you, Charlie Watkins, for being together today. My name is Diane Houdar. My husband John and I live in Eden Township. Eden Township is a zoning township. The objective, purpose, and nature of zoning is to promote the health, safety, and general well-being of the community, to protect and conserve the values of buildings, and to conserve the character of a community. All the things, right? Well, unfortunately, Ohio Township zoning provides no protection from these industrial structures that will destroy the character of our whole community and adversely affect our homes and our health. So the next level up that Eden Township residents would rely and depend upon to protect us is the counties. You, the commissioners. Many of us who live in the eastern part of the county would be living less than a half-mile from more than one of the 652-foot-tall industrial curbs that have wind speeds at the latest just shy of 200 miles per hour. At the top of the list of responsibilities for county officials is the fundamental unwritten responsibility and principle, first, do no harm. That is key, because all the rest of the stuff you do, commissioners, it doesn't mean anything when our health and our homes are in jeopardy. You are just rearranging the chairs on the Titanic as our county sails unchecked toward disaster and destruction of our beautiful rural countryside. Commissioners, commissioners, if you truly care about Seneca County, you must do the right thing. Rescind the AEZ. Shane, sign that waiver.
Yeah.
Trustees and commissioners, you must intervene against these projects. Commissioners, colleague Stacy, Shane, and Thomas, if you cannot or will not protect us, our homes, our health, or safety, then you should step down for someone to do it.
Seems like it just gets more controversial. So I have a little different thought. I'm gonna solve everything out. On one side of the decision, we have the schools and some landowners who receive money. We have ten or so permanent jobs. We have S-Power working to make money in Seneca County. Most of these people will not suffer any negative consequences or have children, money as compensation. On the other side, we have a large number of people who will suffer the negative consequences of living near drag turbines. And then we have an even larger number of people who do not want the Seneca County homeland transformed into Seneca County on Mars. I believe there's a way that all of the people on both sides can come out of this happy. First, let's recognize that S-Power has 66 projects across the US. 64 are solar projects, but only two are wind. The two wind projects are in county southwest with a population of three people or less to square by. Seneca County has 100 or more people to square by. Obviously, this is not the kind of place S-Power used to go to wind turbines. But if the S-Power were to transform its target from Seneca Wind to Seneca Solar on the same lees of land, we would have a completely different situation. Solar is S-Power's number-one business. No one would argue the fact that solar's negative impacts on neighbors in the county are nearly zero when compared to 650-foot-tall wind. So think about it. The landowners would receive income. A solar panel would cover more space than turbines, but remember that it's a lot of it devoted to access roads across fields in a wind project. A solar project would bring in money to schools in the county. A solar project would create construction and maintenance jobs. A solar project would be welcomed by those concerned with climate change. A solar project would allow S-Power to make money in Seneca County and keep it out of the ugly business of building wind turbines in highly populated areas. Very. And Holly and Shane can even give the solar project a pie. There would be some details S-Power would work out in converting wind leases to solar leases, but other companies are already in town trying to sign solar leases, which means they're illegal, but sun-tight and not here to profit. So this scenario is 100% dual, 100%. It would bring the money, the jobs, the profit, and peace, all at the same time. I think everyone, especially S-Power, should seriously consider it. And one last comment, after some of the other comments, I have no fees with any solar company.
Commissioner Thomas, you spent this spring and summer preaching variations on a theme. Talk to the Ohio Power Society Board. The commissioners have no control over these proposed wind projects. We are here tonight because many local township trustees want to take their advice. However, their voices risk being stifled because one person is blocking the township's representation by the county prosecutor, and one person is you, Commissioner Thomas. Mr. Thomas, as a county resident, you may personally support the wind industry, but you are rudely overstepping your bounds by using your electric position to single-handedly deny his township trustees and thousands of local residents the representation, the very avenue you directed them towards only a few short weeks ago. It is clear that the majority are opposed to these projects. When TiffinOhio.net polled leaders on the topic, the results showed 75% opposition. Opposition within the impacted townships is even greater. I work in Crawford County and leave Seneca County shortly in my morning commute, but my wife works on the south side of Tiffin. She drives seven miles through Bloom and Eden Townships every morning and afternoon. On her drive this morning, she saw a 56-yard sign related to wind, three that say yes and 53 that say no. On the Senate Awards website, 149 people have already filed public comments in the Seneca Wind Project case. Five of those people are in support and 144 in opposition. Mr. Thomas, you called this meeting to find a middle ground, explore possible areas of consensus. The truth is, it is too late for any negotiation. S-Power has shown intent to deal with our county and even its own leaseholders with an iron fist. It is truly the Ohio Power Society Board who will decide the fate of this project. Additionally, any accurate representation before the Society Board of what is happening here in Seneca County must be overwhelmingly one-sided in opposition. Any attempt to silence or weaken this message would be a gross misrepresentation of our current reality. If you are sincere in your desire for calling this meeting, then I urge you to join Commissioner Kirk here and repeal the AEZ, as thousands of county residents have asked you to do. It is not too late to give Seneca County a level of control on future projects. Give us a chance to negotiate with Emerson, Honey Creek, and any other future projects. It's too late for any of the AEZ to make a difference in the Republican and Seneca Wind Projects. Commissioner Thomas, your summer refrain of the county's impotence has come to fruition. For the Seneca Wind Project, working with the Ohio Power Society Board is now our only option. You spent all summer telling us to go to the Senate Board, Mr. Thomas. Now please just let us go. Thank you for your time.
Next, you have Ed Clark.
I've been in such a role for probably 35 years, pretty close. So some of this is supposed to be there. In the design of these projects, I don't know how many of you know, it drops up to you. These products are not unexpected by state, local, jurisdiction. Either dumped in the PUCO, Ohio Power Society Board, very well received these projects. So basically, they are designed to do as they will with these projects. Concrete, underground pipelines, the rebar structures, all that, we've done all of the same. In Eden Township, we have roughly about 10 families that stand to make game money monetarily for these projects, and good for them, all happily drawn back on that road. But on the other side of the coin, we have even 44 homeowners directly impacted by these turbines, water barriers. Wherever they go, we have channel clutter, the infrasound vibration, groundwater will be likely to be renewable, lost property values that we've seen a van work that have been recorded in Congress. Not to mention the truck traffic, small township roads, bridges, long roads, the torn up, and workload. People's money that has invested in our council, our county. Why are you not advocating for them versus the wind project? Where are our rights? How can this be such a great thing in our community, so many of the totally projects coming through? These projects would have long-term effects on the wildlife... These projects would have long-term effects on wildlife and citizens in our county. And Shane, you and I called, you called this meeting in the post, meaning that the township would be a good first step. And then I was taken back when I found out you had contacted local contractors via text messages and asking them to connect with S Power and to text me like this. Shane, here, the folks from S Power are in town and they're contracted. And this message, Gordy Gray, Eden, and the Seneca Project, would be willing to talk to them about the sub and local contract. Thanks, and I didn't miss a thing. Good first step, we'd side with the residents of Seneca County. We send the AEZ to all future projects and advocate for safer setbacks for the home and our school. Thanks.
Next, we have Gail Miller.
I attended the Venice Township trustee meeting on October 22nd when Commissioner Thomas attended to promote tonight's meeting. His approach, "We need to come together to discuss the things we have in common." At this meeting, he was asked, "Are you still as pro-wind as you were before?" His response, "I haven't changed my mind on that." Second question, "We know Apex has plans for three or four more wind projects in Seneca County. Would you consider rescinding the AEZ before applications for those projects can be presented?" His response, "That could be a matter for discussion." Commissioner Thomas suggested three paths. Path one, no one intervenes. Is the AEZ the carrot that he wants to dangle in front of his trustees to get them to decide not to intervene? Our trustees cannot afford to take this chance. Path two, we reach a common goal, intervene together? Commissioner Thomas has already stated he is pro-wind and has not changed his mind. Anti-wind residents are not about to change our minds. We are deadlocked. Path three, both sides intervene and go their own way. The Seneca Wind Plan is projected to include six wind turbines within one-half mile of the Seneca East School, 14 within the two-mile radius. Industrial wind turbines produce low-frequency sound, or infrasound, which can be both audible and inaudible, while not experienced by everyone. This sound affects the inner ear. It also can cause headaches, tinnitus, dizziness, and high blood pressure. The taller the turbine, the stronger the infrasound. The World Health Organization report in October stated, "For average noise exposure, the guideline development group traditionally recommends reducing noise levels produced by wind turbines below 45 dBm as wind turbine noise above this level is associated with adverse health effects." The WHO guidelines for community noise recommends less than 30 dBa decibels in bedrooms for good quality sleep and less than 35 dBa in classrooms to allow good teaching and learning conditions. Walls and windows do not shut out the infrasound or low-frequency noise. I quote, "Measured levels of low-frequency sound inside a building are significantly higher than predicted within the low-frequency noise range." The sound level as given in the S Power application indicates that the sound level outside Seneca East would be between 45 and 50 decibels and would definitely not be the World Health Organization recommendation of less than 35 decibels for classrooms. Our children deserve better than this. We all need to ask the Seneca East School Board to pass a resolution to intervene against Seneca Wind in order to get turbines pushed back away from the school. And in order to represent the majority of the residents in their townships, our trustees have no other choice than to pass resolutions to intervene against the Seneca Wind Project. Thank you.
Next, would you like to call on Gary Lustblatt, please?
My name is Gary Lustblatt. I've lived in Eden Township since 1974. I am here to support intervening and stopping the Seneca Wind Project. I feel Seneca Wind has misled, misinformed, and lied to all residents living within the project, easement holders, trustees, commissioners, or exclusively their own benefit. One resident began, when residents began to educate themselves on the facts and the damaging effects, we began to speak out and take necessary actions. We exposed things like the possible side effects to our health and safety. The height of the turbines, 652 feet, originally told 80 to 90 feet. The huge bases for these turbines which could damage our well water quality, our property guidance dropping, our wildlife threatened, how easements were obtained and not fully explained, good neighbor contracts, the real red flag for everyone, and the loss of living in a rural farming community. In Eden Township, we voted to have zoning to avoid these problems. Once we exposed these issues, Seneca Wind felt threatened and began running full-page ads, mailing postcards, contradicting our findings. Seneca Wind also re-ouposed postcards, finding radio ads, making negative statements about Commissioner Kirchner trying to intervene with our elections. Fortunately, Commissioner Kirchner was re-elected. No longer will Seneca County residents within the Seneca Wind Project be misled, misinformed, or lied to. Today, I am here asking Shane Thomas and Holly Stacy to join Mike Kirchner, our trustees, and residents of Seneca County in intervening and stopping the Seneca Wind Project. Thank you.
Next, we have that guy.
Big Wind has a big footprint. The skyscraper-sized turbines proposed by S Power would be located in densely populated rural areas. As a comparison, the 376-foot turbines in Dirt Kirk, Ohio, only a handful of homes are within two miles. There would be thousands of homes within two miles of these turbines. There would be thousands of homes. We purchased land in Eden Township to develop. We paid premiums because Eden has zoning. Landowners have rights, but when their endeavors overshadow and hurt their neighbors, that's where their rights end. Anyone who has traveled the western US can't help it, knows the big turbines. But where are the homes? There are no homes. For that matter, it would be hard for us to find any land-based turbines of this size anywhere in the United States. The average lifespan of an industrial turbine is 15 years. Van Wart County to the west has already seen real loss in home properties. Within the footprint of the Le Creux Home, only seven years old. Dunkirk, Van Wart, and Pauling all have had lay throws in their industrial turbines. These industrial turbines can throw fractured plates, ice shed, and other debris well over 2,000 feet. Current setbacks are only 1,125 feet from property line. Big wind companies want to place them even closer than that. Big wind lobbies are working hard in Ohio to return to the old setbacks established in Ohio when wind turbines were only 150 or 200 feet high. In fact, one of our commissioners, Mr. Thomas, apparently thinks that's acceptable. Mr. Thomas is there to be working to reduce those setbacks, along with Senator Dolan from Chuberry Falls, whose family owns the Cleveland Indians. Together, these elected officials would drastically reduce our setbacks. A 650-foot turbine with blade tip speeds of 170 miles per hour, a rotor diameter of 426 feet that would sweep an area of three football fields could be just 783 feet from properties, including schools, parks, nature preserves, and our home properties. We like to say Senator Dolan is trying to steal home, our homes. Maybe Senator Dolan, Mr. Thomas, would sign up for that, wanting these next city of properties. Of course, Chuberry Falls probably has no means to prevent that from happening. The majority of Seneca County residents just have one thing to say about these massive turbines, and that is, "No, no, 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 no."
I came in this county about 50 years ago, and I just love this county. A good guy made me the first loan, which was Michael Pearson. And what this is going to do, it's going to make your eyes sore. You're not going to be able to look at the terrain. You're not going to be able to live in your house unless you put up blinds and never wind them. I'm too old for that, you know, and I'd have to go inside rooms and pull the blinds out. And the noise will be so bad, and the older you get, the noise makes you more high blood pressure and everything else. Your animals are going to be affected when you go outside. And it's just going to ruin this county, and I love this county. I've stayed here, when I first came in here, worked for the gas company over there, and stayed. I've been here 50 years, and the people in this county is just great. And if you let this windmill come in, it's going to destroy the scene of view, it's going to, the noise and everything. Go up to Pauling County, talk to somebody up there. It's got a house anywhere close to the windmills. They don't like it. I mean, and they can't sell their property. It's going to drive down your property values. It's going to hurt you in so many different ways. I don't want to look at them. I don't want to worry about the eyes going off. What about the ground outside road? Are you going to try to grab down this road that's within 1,000 feet? We did a few ice storms here. What's going to happen then? And the other people that want this stuff, they have compensation or they have a motive. So we all got to stick together and prevent this. And now is the time to do it. You don't want to wait until after they start building. We don't want to be able to do anything. So, I'm good, okay? I would suggest everybody stick together and keep this ball rolling. I think we can stop it if we all stick together, but if we don't stick together...
Next, would you like to call on Jim Billyham?
My name is Jim Billyham, retired Army veteran with 22 years of service. And I have a determined disability rating of 70% by the VA. I returned home to Ohio after being away for more than 30 years to enjoy my retirement. Now I'm faced with the decision to agree on pain based on my medical condition to the Seneca and Republic wind project to move forward. One of the major disabilities I've been with for the rest of my life, determined by the VA, is chronic heart failure, 28 years. This life-altering condition occurred in July 2000, and I continue to suffer from it disorderly today. I also be sacked and asked to review an article written by Dr. Jerry Fons and Mr. Richard James, which I approve, which through wind turbines pose risks to human health and welfare. After you have read that article, I ask that you consider the health and welfare of doctors' staffs. But of all the residents within the Seneca Republic wind project, and based on the determination of a person's health and welfare and work connectivity. Through my research and medical issues associated with turbines, I have been in direct contact with Dr. Jerry Fons, who's a professor at Emory Sun Michigan study, I'm a bookshelf man, it's a pleasure, to gain his professional opinion on decisions. The topics I face with my conditions stem from, but are not limited to, shadow flicker and infrasound. Based on the recent Seneca Wind LLC supplement to application tackle filed September 14th to the Ohio Public Utilities Commission, it's clear of the 2,902 resident IEDs found in Table B-1, only 152 of those are participating in the Seneca Wind Project. Simple math shows that 81.91% of homeowners in this footprint want nothing to do with the target. The high percentage of non-participants listed should stand for something. Based on that document, I reached out to the Ohio Power Society Board to uncover which resident IED is associated with my address. There's no address if you have a number. My number is 855. Resident IED 855 has a listed decimal level above the current World Health Organization's recommended safe level. And my non-participating resident, 855, is on the shortlist of homes that will experience 30 hours or more of shadow flicker throughout the year. This is certainly a great concern for my family and I. I urge you to consider all the implications discussed here today, coupled with the World Health Organization's noise level recommendations as all of these issues not taken into consideration will lead to adverse health conditions for all of our residents. Thank you.
Jody Runwon.
Hi, my name is Jody Runwon. I actually live in Adams Township, but I'm on the CBO line. The same home that my parents brought me home to from the hospital. My roots in this county run deep. Six generations have lived in the same place that I live with my family. Three miles up the road, the farm where my great-great-great-grandfather planted wood so he could farm and then in the 1830s still remains in the family. When I first heard about the wind turbines, I approached it with an open mind. However, the more I researched, read, and heard, the more concerned I became. A structure taller than the statue of Liberty outside my rural back door, I don't live in New York City. I'm really concerned about the colony of bats that's made its home in my 100-year-old barn for decades. They would be decimated, no doubt, by this wind turbine. And even though my daughter and granddaughter would love that, I kind of got used to them. Eight years ago, on my way home from work, I saw something in a field. There was a deer carcass that what I just assumed was a buzzer. But the closer I got, the white head and the enormous wingspan gave it away. A bald eagle. The first one I had ever seen in my life, and it was only four miles from my home. Since then, I've seen about a dozen eagles, jumals, a quarter of a half mile from my home. To think about these being torn off by wind turbines makes me sick to my stomach. For almost 28 years, I've been a professional real estate appraiser. And because of that background, the word feasibility keeps running through my mind. Feasibility, the possibility that it can be done reasonably. Thus, I have a question. If our turbines must be 652 feet high in order to catch the winds, while most other farms are only 300 to 400 feet tall, are we really the most feasible location? Will the extra cost really generate the proportion amount of energy? I'm all for green, reduce, reuse, recycle. It's part of my daily life. Reduce, reuse, recycle, it's part of my day in life. But if we take away all of the tax incentives, will they still want to put the wind farms here? And again, as an appraiser, my law class from forty years ago comes echoing back. Bundle of rights. The complex set of rights the ownership of land carries. The right of possession, control, exclusion, disposition, and quiet enjoyment. The covenant of promises, the granting of an estate of real property to be able to possess that premises in peace, without disturbance by hostile claimants. The right of undisturbed use and enjoyment of real property by a landowner. That right will be desecrated if two wind turbines are built within two miles of my home. The noise, flicker, loss of beautiful sunrises, and wildlife, fear of flying debris, and potential health risks to violate my quiet enjoyment. Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion. Thank you for the trustees for standing up for the people that have voted you in. Thank you to the Seneca and Wind Union for your tireless efforts. And congratulations, Mr. Kirshner, for vote confidence from the people.
Next, would you like to call on Danette Martin, please?
Hello, my name is Danette Martin. I'm born, raised, and now live in South Dakota along with my husband, my two kids, and my entire family. We own businesses here, and we own a hand here, and we are long with the Senate County Council of Representatives. A few nights ago, I asked my husband, just what am I going to do if I drive down my one-way country road behind a turbine park and rail to the field beside my home? Just what are we going to do? One might say that it comes down to property rights, and their right to do what they want with their land. Okay, well, why are there noise offenses? Why do building permits exist? What about trash? What about junk on your property, the hydrographs? It's because those things affect other people. I think property rights do matter. And I think that those people that have the least to gain equally deserve those. But they say that our county needs money and clean energy. And we say it's a tax scam, a health hazard, what about roads, lies, the under cheats tactics? Right now, I don't think that between pros and cons are really gonna matter. No one's gonna change their mind at this point. What it really comes down to is those one hundred and thirty people per square mile. It's not worth ripping apart a square mile of neighbors, families, and friends. Did you ever think that our county would be at this far, where we are today? We are divided in property lines, and it makes us sick. This just isn't worth it. No matter your stance, you have to believe that there is no price for Americans' division. And that is why everyone in this room should now be against this project. It's not about being for win or anti-win, it's about being for community. And I feel that every representation of our county should reflect that. My energy takes me in a lot of different directions these days as a white mother in this summer. And maybe those things mean that I shouldn't be so vocal in my position. But my parents always told me that I need to work hard, that I need to stand for things that are important and to fight for what I believe in no matter the cost, and don't take no bullshit. So I hope you guys all believe the same thing. Thank you, and thank you, Phil.
Next, would you like to call on Tom and Shelley Smith?
First of all, I apologize, this sounds familiar. My name is Shelley Smith. I've been retired as Senator County Manager, like, I'm in a new township and we have five turbines within a half a mile of my home, actually surrounding my home. We have twenty within two miles. This is my family's home, rural farm and stream. Although many issues concerning these projects have me very worried, my greatest concern is health and welfare of my family, friends, and neighbors. Infrasound, EMFs, and stray voltage are a major concern for all of us. I was diagnosed with connective tissue disease, Lyme disease, and a basal nerve disorder within the last two years. In the past three months, my daughter has been diagnosed with autoimmune dysentery. That is basically when your autoimmune system doesn't have a baseline. The issue with this is these disorders are highly affected by infrasound EMFs. And these turbines all have those. I have done much time on research and found county studies that show this to be proven and true concerning all the areas that have wind turbines. I wrote down some samples. If anybody wants information, get with me, I will give you tons of it. I'm gonna skip the accents, I'm not talking very well, and basically just tell you, there's Dr. Marian Alves-Guerra. Look her up, that lady was twenty years before the war. These are just dumb symptoms that can happen to people that have these issues. Do you have difficulty sleeping? Depression, durability, aggressiveness, cognitive dysfunction, chest pain, pressure, headaches, joint pain, skin irritation, nausea, dizziness, tinnitus, and stress. They have been attributed to the pressure waves that these wind turbines generate from the noise and infrasound. But they also generate electrical magnetic waves with poor power quality, which is called electromagnetic, and radar. These can adversely affect those who are hypersensitive, especially those with autoimmune disorders. Indeed, as Senator mentioned, are insistent with the electoral hypersensitivity. But both sound electrical magnetic waves different among individuals, and that's why not everybody is affected. You don't, you won't know till it happens unless you have seen these issues already. I have spoken with some of the people who are affected by these problems myself. Me, I talk to them. This isn't off the internet or anything like that. The only way they had to escape was from me. These industrial wind turbines stole their life. Many people say that they had issues when they were within five miles of the turbines. The closer they get, the worse they get. It's a very basically takeaway, our pocket of life, impossible forces out of our homes just for a few extra half-hours. This is my main assault on the state by allowing these in the county. If you care at all, you monsters in the ways, you must be against these projects. Do all you can to stop these tragedies that is occurring in our county that's dividing us. It's home to them and not just a few. Thank you all, I appreciate the time.
Next, would you like to call on Tammy Andrews?
My name is Tammy Andrews, I live in Adams Township. I'm a retired teacher, so pay attention because there's still be a quiz. I'm not working this quarter. I know that schools do as much as possible to ensure that each child is able to learn to the best of their ability. We try to reduce or work around any barrier a child may have. Extended buildings, homework sent home, communication is kept open with the parents. Poverty, researching and learning about the culture of poverty helps with understanding. Teachers bring in healthy snacks, extra clothing is gathered up, referrals to extra help are shared. Special needs, intervention specialists, speech, physical, occupational therapy, school psychologists are available to work one-on-one with these students. Progress is monitored, tracked, and celebrated. Differences are many in children's lives. And so the children come to us with these barriers to their ability to learn. But in our township, two of the county commissioners have created a barrier for the students in the Seneca County's local school system. A huge barrier that could affect a large number of students. I've never worked in a district where elected, elected officials deliberately did something like this to their students. The students at Seneca East will have not won, but sixteen industrial wind turbines encircling their school. I'm currently rehired in a small school in Seneca County as a tutor. I help students with learning differences in their classes as well as in study hall. In the past three years, I've worked with six students who are on the autism spectrum. The brain of a person with autism is wired differently, and you never get a care of it. Sensory issues can be part of autism. One student was bothered by the subtle flickering of fluorescent lights. Another was bothered by too much noise in the classroom. Both of these could be mitigated somewhat if I had a quieter place for studying. Imagine though what it will be like for such a student to be exposed to the flicker effect every sunny, rainy day. Lights and window shades won't completely block it, and nothing blocks the infrasound as well as the decimal levels these machines generate. For some on the autism spectrum, that will be torment. And this will affect more than just kids on the spectrum. Outside activities will be impacted as well, including recess, sports practices, games, and all who take part in and watch those practices and games. Next year's new class of kindergartners will have students who will be affected in some way or ways by the hulking chorus of turbines around their school. And since there's only one building for grades K-12, those affected students will not be able to escape the annoyances, the nightmare. There's no elementary building in a different location, there's no middle school in another part of the township where the students can have some relief from the effects. How a shame and dare to think that school will be a daily experience to be dreaded for the entire school career, thirteen years of some of these students. That is part of their legacy to these kids, and what a shameful legacy for an elected official to leave to his alma mater. To the trustees who have passed their resolution to intervene against these turbines, bless you. To my trustees, Venice, you've been entrusted with the children in Seneca East. Don't be swayed tonight by perhaps a potential deal such as a commissioner agreeing to rescind the AECZ in exchange for you not intervening. You can best help our kids by voting to pass the resolution to intervene against the turbines at your next meeting. Please do so.
Would you like to call on Stephanie Miller next, please?
My name is Stephanie Miller, and I'm a resident of Green Township in Seneca County. Though the arguments about opposition to these wind turbines are considerable here, one hits very close to home for myself and my family. Should something happen to us or another resident within our county lines, I worry about the accessibility of emergency personnel, the safety of those involved, and those precious peaceful staffs. Eleven years this past August, I was in a horrible car accident that almost took my life. The accident occurred in Venice Township, which is about four to five miles from my home, and I had to be lifelike from the city. The location of my accident is proposed to have three wind turbines located right there. From my understanding of the research that I have done, like flight, it will be for them to learn if provided assistance is not guaranteed and will be compromised by a variety of obstacles. The height of these turbines and the air pressure we create are just two of the obstacles. Due to the air pressure around these turbines, I have read that like flight, we have to leave anywhere from two miles to six miles or more away from the actual site of emergency. This is a huge distance when these wind turbines are widespread and located in clusters, which make it difficult for emergency personnel to get close. Also, just recently, the Director of Operations, like flight and Tito, released a comment that they do not have specific regulations regarding the turbines. However, they do have to follow FAA regulations that govern how helicopter air ambulance helicopters in the United States operate. Pilots must be able to clear all obstacles by three hundred feet during the day or by five hundred feet at night while staying, while still staying five hundred feet below the cloud ceiling above them. This becomes a major obstacle when like flight is necessary to save a person's life. These turbines are much higher than the other wind turbines in Ohio, therefore there is much more of an issue surrounding the six hundred and forty-nine of these turbines presented in Seneca County when it comes to like flight. I have been in contact with local flight, local like flight personnel, and all I have been told is not to worry, it becomes like, excuse me, like flight, and the local fire department will be in contact with one another if something were to happen so that a decision can be made as to how to proceed. However, it is in these situations where like flight is needed that every second counts. Through discussion with local fire department personnel, they too are looking for answers to these same questions. There is not time if something happens to discuss a plan with the necessary local emergency personnel in these life or death situations. If this had been the case eleven years ago, I may not be here today, but my family and I want this to become a reality for someone else. In conclusion, the citizens of Seneca County need to be heard. It is time for all of the Seneca County commissioners to do the job they were elected by the constituents to do, and protect us from the natural hazards. To make the county work to part for the next thirty-plus years of our life. I want to thank you, Mike Kirshner, for all of your support, and the township trustees for your support too. Thank you.
All right, so we have about four minutes left in the hour, and we have four other people who would like to speak that registered, so we're gonna extend it and let those four people speak. So the next person to wake up is... Jeff Phillips?
Hi, I'm Jeff. I'm the father of Stephanie Miller, just got to speak, and so it does hit home real close. She said four miles, that's from her house. It happened at the corner of my road, less than a quarter mile from my house. And yes, there are three turbines. They're supposed to go across the street, and you cross over within a quarter of a mile, plus the ones downtown like twelve, that are within half mile to a mile, depending, two miles on down. So it's quite a few of them there. It does, it does affect people. Common sense, what I was up here for. First time I went to a meeting was at Flat Rock. Mike Kirshner showed that common sense. One of the things he said, and I remember it was, he didn't think it affected our real estate family, our house, but we had that faith, and yes, he agrees with it from what I've seen in the past. I thank you for that. It does, common sense. When you see these agreements that these people sign, and it doesn't go the way they want it, they cannot argue with it, they cannot make public that they disagreed with it, sorry, there's a red flag, common sense tells you that's not a good thing. A lot of these little things are going on. Common sense, I guess if there's money involved, that precedes your common sense. You need to use the common sense to pull out of this if possible. I guess that's it for me. Just one more thing too. One of the things I noticed too, my wife and I have come back. There's still a small eagle, but it's in the back behind my house. Chances are that's not gonna be there if these things come up. I know growing up, I never saw eagles until these past few years. And I've lived in Ohio all my life, so it does affect our...
Linda Hopman?
I would like to speak about the purpose of local government, and specifically how some in our local government see their role in dealing with the proposed wind turbines. Commissioner Thomas wrote, and I quote, "This is about property laws and a person's legal right to freely enter into a contract. The state of Ohio is zoned for utility wind development. That is a fact, it is legal." Now listen to this. "County or township government should not interfere with a person's right to maximize a profit on their land." That is as plain and simple as I can make it, end quote. Our situation is so much more complex than just a property rights issue for one specific group of people. Federal and state governments pass laws making it legal for wind... Federal and state governments pass laws making it legal for wind development, but that doesn't mean that every county has to allow... Yeah, I know you're that. Sorry. That every county has to allow turbines to be placed there. And it certainly doesn't mean that county or township government should die or fear. In fact, I would say quite the opposite. They have an obligation to intervene. Here's an example. In the state of Colorado, they made it legal for marijuana to be grown, harvested, sold, and used. But there are dry counties in Colorado where you can't raise it and you can't buy it. In the counties where growing and selling marijuana is not a fit, local government was responsive to their constituents, and they intervened. My point is just because something is allowed by the state, it does not mean that local governments cannot intervene for the greater good of all of citizens. Local government is useless if it doesn't represent the whole community. Many kinds of rights to be considered and many questions to be answered. I've read a long list of them, but for the sake of time, I'll just mention one. Does Seneca County have the resources to deal with litigation that will inevitably come about if turbines are erected in our area? I mention this specifically because I have never seen anything that has divided our country, our community, as much as the turbines have. And when people can't work things out together, and when their elected officials don't represent them, they turn to the courts. The role of local government is to take the time to find out what the people want for their community and act on it. You know, this whole concept of wind turbines was sprung on us. Many people knew what was being planned for years, but they decided to keep it secret. So this thing began badly in that thing and has gone downhill since. The role of our local government is to intervene with whatever measures are available and to halt these wind projects and straighten out this mess before it becomes a disaster in our county.
Next to you, I'm Danielle Boyer.
In order to promote positive economic growth countywide, there should be a cooperative understanding between all agencies, citizens, and public officials so that all parties can be involved in the new industry proposal. Economic development must be considered within the land use framework in order to have maximum benefit on the regional and local economies while having minimum negative impacts on the environment, serves the economic character of the area. Furthermore, the use of economic development agreements through intergovernmental coordination should be promoted. Seneca County provides an example of the value of open space and natural resources to its residents. Throughout the county's path to natural environment, it has played an important role in defining Seneca's identity. Seneca County prides itself on its rural character and agricultural resources. Citizens want to maintain a rural character of the county by preserving farm land and other agricultural features. To protect the county's rural character, built-in management techniques need to be used to encourage compact development in existing urban areas, plan to have the growth and prevent further environmental degradation of the land. We need to encourage growth that builds upon existing municipalities and supports rural residential, commercial, and industrial growth only within identified urban growth boundaries where public infrastructure is available. We need to preserve farm land, recognize the agriculture as a vital agricultural resource. We need to develop and implement an aggressive program to preserve agricultural uses in those areas identified for permanent agricultural preservation. Citizens and officials alike acknowledge that the encroaching of development on our city is a critical condition. We need to protect sensitive environmental areas such as wetlands, woodland, steep slopes, and nature species habitats, native species habitats, and flora and fauna from the impacts of development. We need to restrict development in critical resource areas such as the 100-year floodplain and perennial stream bunkers. We need to maintain and preserve natural open space borders, which is important to wildlife and plant life habitats. These items are not my original thoughts. They're all part of a document that was accepted as a guide for the Seneca County Regional Planning Commission. The Seneca County Comprehensive Plan was created to advise elected officials on actions relevant to growth and change. My request is that the public officials that are elected in Seneca County take another look at this document. Based on this study, I feel that it's the duty of our elected officials to intervene against the Seneca Industrial Wind Project that will impact our farming and decimate our rural spaces and sensitive environmental areas. Thank you.
The last person to speak will be Miss Candy Hop. Okay, well at this time, I would like to conclude our public comments section as we went over the hour, and everyone who registered got to speak. I'd like to thank all those who registered and those who may comment for keeping the time constraints and being polite and courteous. It was very nice. Now I turn this over to the commissioners and trustees for their discussion. Might want to give us like five, six minutes for Jim to figure out how to get this mic up there so that everybody can hear him, okay? Thanks. Okay, everyone, we're going to try to do a couple tests because, you know, beggars can't be choosers and we borrowed the audio equipment for free. We're going to do the best we can. We would just ask that you please be considerate and understand that we do have some sound issues. We may not be able to hear everybody, so we're going to try our hardest to get this mic around to everyone, but wanted to encourage the discussion. So now we'll turn it over to the commissioners. Thank you.
All right, well, I guess at this point, we will ask the trustees if they have any comments or would like to have a discussion. I'm not really certain of the purpose. I wasn't involved in planning this meeting, but I would certainly want to listen to whatever we, whatever direction we need to go with this. Mr. Thomas, which way would you like to go?
I know that we have a few sets of trustees that have already intervened, and I just wonder if you want to talk about some of your thought process and maybe help us understand where your thought process was on the intervention, and if we can find some common ground there with you. So, we talked, you want to talk a little bit about your thought process in the intervention?
My name is David Gray. I'm Reed Township trustee. And this meeting supposedly was organized by Shane and Charlie. Anyhow, as Reed Township trustees, we are here to represent the citizens of Reed Township. And we have a stronghold that do not want these turbines in our backyards. There are several reasons, I could go into them on a long list, but we are here to intervene against this wind project, the future wind projects, because it's just going to ruin our Seneca County. We're already putting everybody neighbor against neighbor, family against family. What else do you want, Shane and Holly? We've got to do something. This is Seneca County. It is a beautiful place to live. I moved here 23 years ago to start my family. And with this in the backyard, I don't know if I'll continue to live there because we don't want this. My family and I was forced to go out west and see the wind turbines out west this summer, and they're everywhere. But there's no houses, no buildings, nothing. So whatever you guys got to do, Shane and Holly, to get it through your guys' head, the people of Seneca County do not want this. And I think we need to go to a vote, and township by township. City should not have anything to do with this because it doesn't affect them other than they get money for it.
I guess we'll go right down to Township's here. It's got enough room. Lou, you have some thoughts, John? All right, it's for discussion purposes, I guess. All right, they are on formal session, it's sunshine law right here, so.
Really, guys, I think everybody has said all that needs to be said. When I took this position, I went out, I knocked on doors, and I've said this story many times, so if you've heard it before, you're here again. When I knocked on doors in Eden Township, I asked the people for their support, and I told them I would do what was right for them when it comes down to making decisions like this. And with all the negative publicity that this has brought onto the township, the animosity amongst the people, obviously nobody wants it for a very large majority because they're not wanting. I'm taking the stance of supporting the people, and we intervened last evening in our meeting, and I have no desire to change that opinion. And that's basically all I got to say about that.
My name's Rodney Miller, Cipio Township trustee. I'm not a man of many words, but when many people show up in a building like this, it means something. There's a lot of people in here that I haven't seen in 30 years. Thank you for coming out. That shows that you're loyal to your county, right there. I work construction, I build bridges for a living. I know what it takes to put one of these things up. Right now, I'm working in Lima, Ohio, and I traveled down Route 30 right now and go past the Ada project that's, the windmills are up already and running. There's one thing I don't see around them is people, and I don't see vehicles of the people that are working at those windmills. That should mean something as a commissioners. Where are the people that put them up? They're not around here no more. Why don't we bring some industry to town, put food on our plate? These people are going to come to our restaurants, put money in our communities. They're going to move to this community, their kids are going to go to our schools. We're not going to chase them away and put these things up right now. Thank you.
I guess what I have to say is Venice Township has not voted either way on this, and we will on Monday night. Again, I could beat a dead horse, we've listened to you all tonight, we know what the stance is, so Monday we will make our decision and we'll go from there. Thank you.
So Derek, I have a question for you. Derek Devine, our prosecutor, if anybody doesn't know him. We had a waiver on the Republic Wind Project, and that doesn't apply to the Seneca Wind Project at this point. You would be circulating a separate waiver?
Yes. Again, it's kind of happened recently. We just recently got the resolutions. We just recently got the resolutions from a couple of Townships. So we're going to start the process of filing for the intervention. In my opinion, that's more of a scrivener's type of job, putting the, what, two or three pieces of paper. So we're going to get that filed. If we get a waiver of a conflict of interest between people that are pro-wind and anti-wind, then we will represent the Townships. If we don't, then we can't represent one entity we represent against another absent that waiver. If you're not a lawyer, think about it, if you've got a fight between, you know, two or three of your brothers, you really can't stick your nose in there and pick one brother over the other, or else you're going to have a problem. We would have a legal conflict of interest representing Cipio Township or Reed Township against another township or against the county. So if we get the waiver, we'll be happy to represent. If not, then there's other attorneys out there that are on top that will represent the Township.
My other question is that if the county does not intervene, are you free to represent the Townships?
If the county is not a party to the litigation, then I would think that we would have no conflict and we would be able to represent the Townships.
If the county votes two to one to support the wind projects, you are legally comfortable. I would not. Well, I would not, as a Senate vote, you can't represent, you can't have a county in favor of wind projects and representing the Township. I think there's a conflict there as well.
Well, I was going on the question that if there was no vote, if there was no action by the commissioners, if the commissioners didn't do anything. If you have a vote on whether to intervene, then you're committing to a policy.
Let's make it a simple. If we sign conflict later, there is no problem.
Correct. Sign conflict later, no problem.
Okay, I think that is pretty much what folks want. I'm going to do this one more time, guys, because I kind of love being up here on my own sometimes. There's two words I'd like you guys to say, because I kind of like to hear, so I haven't heard yet. Those two words are "eye sucking." Can you do that for me? Eye sucking? I'd like to move to recede easy for Seneca County. Thank you, I haven't heard that yet, so I appreciate it. We're done tonight, thank you.